Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the continuation of our special meeting of council on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is now six oh one. And we are at number six on our on our agenda, which is the land acknowledgement, and I'd like to acknowledge that the town of Midland recognizes that it's located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Nishnabik people known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Brahma First Nation, and Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre Confederation Treaty five and Treaty sixteen and included within the Williams Treaties of nineteen twenty-three. Town of Midland recognizes it's located on land, which is a traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and historic homelands of the Matee, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. Next, Alaska thirty declarations of conflict of interest with the agenda this evening. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, thank you, worship. I'd like to declare conflict of interest for item number ten point or point two CSR two oh two three dash nine dash two oh two three. It's on the proposed fees and charges. The reason for my declaration is my wife works for us Canonia, and there may be some discussion on fees because she does rent space there. So that that's by conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When the time comes, I'll let you just vacate your seat while we have those conversations. Now, council, if I could ask that we enjoy a moment of silence, sound reflection. Thank you very much, council. Now we move into number eight on our agenda, motions arising from closed meeting discussions. I have a motion moved by councillor Downer, seconded by councillor Prost, that council receive his information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report provided by the Director of Human Resources at the closed meeting session of council held today, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three with respect to the IBW negotiations. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, I have a motion moved by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Bald. The council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal report provided by the Director of Human Resources at the closed meeting session of council held February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three with respect to the CAO recruitment. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Uh, next, the approval of the agenda. I have a motion here moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Downer, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three be approved. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Next, we move quickly to the consent agenda, moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Ball, that the items and related recommendations contained within the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of ten point four point two CSR two thousand and twenty-three dash nine two thousand and twenty-three proposed fees and charges, which will be considered under section seventeen, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration, which includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. This is the moment where if there's anything that we're about to approve under the consent agenda, if you wanted to speak to it or any comments or questions that don't involve changing or changing direction or giving direction, this would be the time to do that, council. Is there anything in the consent agenda? Perhaps while you're contemplating, it all kick things off. Uh, one of the items included in here is a very comprehensive report, uh, which for those following along at home will be ten point four point one, which is a planning services development, application and project overview. And I just wanted to, uh, you know, give credit where credit is due to our planning team who put together a very meticulous and detail oriented report about planning services in our in our municipality as well as, uh, a review for those of you following at home of some of the more strategic and important projects and their status uh, and who's, you know, whose court the ball sits in right now, and some of the challenges in moving these these files forward, uh, status of our many, 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 uh, units that are contemplating being built in our community uh, has clearly a very important thing to this council as it was last council, and supporting our planning department and building department in moving those matters through to completion, uh, or at least to the point where building permits are ready to be pulled is something that's strategically important. And so I just wanted to, uh, call out the very, very comprehensive report that was created for our education and hope that you all learn something from it. And it's something I think we could file away and refer back to if we scratch our heads about something or some planning speak uh, at some point during this term. So, and I look forward to the updates that, uh, the planning department's committed to provide us on some of these matters and move forward. There's my long winded thank you for what turned out to be a very comprehensive report. Um, those are my comments on the consent agenda items, council, or any other questions or comments? Councillor Meredith?
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, and, um, yeah, and I just want to, um, actually echo those, uh, those words. I I did find it very informative and, uh, uh, very well, um, well done, um, and attention to detail. It it gave us a, uh, myself a great plan on what's going on in Midland where the status of the planning, um, um, where where everything's at. So, um, to fall back on that, if I have any questions from constituents, um, and also we've been briefed on, uh, uh, the major, you know, um, in a few weeks ago, I believe it was, uh, we've been, we were briefed on, uh, on the major, um, things that are happening, uh, uh, but in all in all, uh, very impressed with, uh, that, uh, that, uh, um, overview and, uh, good work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bolt.
Yes, um, usually, um, I do sort of skim through long reports, but in this case, I was very, um, you know, it was very favorable. I I had to had to read everything, and it was a very good report. So thank you very much to the planning, building and bylaw group.
Which I have affectionately rebranded as there are growth department. All right. Any other questions or comments? Very good. I'll call the question on the approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. All right. We are now at number eleven, which is a motion by councillor East, seconded by councillor McDonald. The council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? That is carried. This is the deputy mayor show. I will turn the chair over to our deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to thank council for, uh, being here this morning and this evening. Welcome. I'd like to welcome the guest, uh, or in the audience, but also to the viewers who are tuning in for this evening's session. We're going to begin, uh, with the committee of the whole with item number twelve. Uh, there there is no public meeting or hearing this evening. Moving on to number thirteen. There are no presentations for this evening. Number fourteen. There is no, uh, items for the integrity commissioner, uh, or any recommendations report provided for this evening. Uh, we're moving on to item number fifteen. We are on to deputations. We have two this evening. Just wanted to remind council that after the presentations, they can ask questions to the presenter. Um, any clarifications? Uh, or make comments? At this point, uh, I will allow ten minutes for the presenters to, uh, present, uh, their presentation. And this evening, we have the Midland Curling Club about the history, the operating structure and the surfaces offered. I'd like to call upon Mr. Graham J. to present to council. Mr. Gray, you have a microphone.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Gordon for making me aware of the opportunity that, uh, we have to present to council. We, uh, we've chatted in the past, and, uh, I didn't realize we could do this. So it's it's a great opportunity. Uh, a little bit on me. I I'm the president of the Curling Club. I represent a board of, uh, nine members, uh, who also, uh, present on me, and uh, I'm gonna take some notes here on how to run a meeting. It's, uh, it's fantastic to watch, watch work in progress. Um, a little bit about, uh, about, uh, the Curling Club, uh, on an event coming up, uh, February twenty-fifth. You'll want to put on your calendars because there will be a lot going on there. It's Curling Day in Canada, so I'll just make you aware of that. Um, in terms of, uh, in terms of who we are, uh, to give, really, the objective tonight is to give a little bit of, uh, understanding of what the Curling Club does and how we're incorporated with the, uh, with the town. Um, it struck me, uh, I've lived in the area for just a few years, and it struck me how little actual integration there was between our organization and the town itself. So, uh, for those who haven't been out to the club, this might be an education, and for those who have been involved, uh, you know, it's maybe a refresher. So first of all, the the club opened in nineteen nineteen, uh, following collaboration between the Town of Midland Council, Midland Agricultural Society and fifty-one concerned citizens. I I I like that because it shows, um, the true nature of community and collaboration, that something can come together like that. Uh, we're a community or we're curling and community center. Uh, we have a building, obviously, that's available for rentals as well as we, uh, we make it available for other, uh, organizations within the community. Uh, we are a member operated not-for-profit, uh, organization. Operating costs are funded through member dues, sponsorships, and the rentals of our facilities. So we are, uh, completely self-funded. Uh, facility capital costs are fairly significant. Nineteen nineteen, so our building is a hundred and four years old. Uh, we do have significant capital costs, and, uh, the capital costs have been funded primarily through grants. So in terms of the benefits, what benefits do we really offer to the community? And I'll just walk, we'll walk through the, uh, the different steps here. Um, if you think of, uh, in terms of our primary benefits, uh, we are a sports service provider. Uh, it's obvious in the name, and it's obvious in the, uh, in in the understanding of what the club's about, but it really goes beyond that. And if you take it to the next level, we we develop and and strive to develop future, uh, potential champions. We had champions come out of the club in the past. Uh, most notably, the Howard's, who now curl at a Penetang, started at the Midland Curling Club, and that's where they they grew up and learned as youth and, uh, and as well into their teen years. Um, it's also a community gathering place. Uh, we have, uh, facilities for rent, uh, either upstairs or downstairs in our lounges. And, uh, quite often, uh, when we're holding events, it does draw people in, uh, to who don't know, usually come into the curling club to, uh, see what we have to offer. In terms of the spin-off, uh, benefits, um, first of all, we're a very inclusive sport. It's, uh, it's something that pretty much anybody can do, uh, almost at any age. Uh, and I'd encourage everybody in the room at some time to come out and try it if you haven't tried it in the past. Uh, we do have consume, uh, community service involvement. So because we're not-for-profit, we understand that there's, uh, other groups out there that benefit from uh, collaboration, and we strive to do that, and I'll get into that a little more. And, uh, finally, the economic benefits. Whenever there is something that comes into the community or into the club that is a draw, it brings people in from out of town, uh, who obviously, you know, it's the usual restaurants and and hotels and stays and things like that, uh, that have the spinoffs as well, frankly, as the as the communication and the highlighting of Midland, uh, as a as a center for many different things, not including curling. All of this is at no to no cost to the town. Okay? So what do the benefits look like? Um, uh, first of all, in terms of the core curling Canada, we we teach curling Canada certified, uh, curling, uh, methodology. So it's basically following curling Canada so that you're getting good, consistent, and, um, and generally accepted, uh, training for the sport itself. Um, and the the diagram or the, uh, the images there really cover it. It covers, it's a, it's a lifelong sport. Uh, they talk about lifelong sports like swimming, things like that. You can play hockey for a while, but after a few bumps around and that, things like that, you eventually get to a point where maybe you can't play. As you can see in the, uh, imagery, um, the person on the right there, his name is Joe Ogden, uh, perhaps you recognize the name, a longtime family, uh, lived in the area. He celebrated his ninety-fifth birthday at the club, uh, last week, and, uh, you know, that's a, that's a great smile, but you can imagine starting from youth and then coming through, and this is exactly, uh, the middle picture is, uh, an image of one of our coaches working with, uh, one of our new members, um, and the passing along of knowledge. It's very much volunteer-based. It's, uh, this is how it carries on. Uh, we've recently with the, uh, ending of, I like to say the ending of COVID, but, uh, let's call it that. Uh, we've welcomed back, uh, the Georgia Bay District Secondary School Girls, uh, Team into the building. Um, it's beneficial for them. They get reduced cost ice. Uh, we work very closely with their coaching to be sure we're flexible and can, uh, can have them in so that we can bring along the next version of curlers. And you can see by the looks on their faces, the enjoyment that they have when they're together, uh, as a team, working, uh, to develop their skills. And then finally, uh, we we recently hosted the Scotty's, uh, Tournament of Hearts qualification. Uh, that was in January. So this is bringing people in from around the province to qualify to go to the final qualifier, uh, for the National Scotties. Um, and that drew, uh, the club was full. I mean, it was, uh, it was a really well-attended event, well-executed event, and, uh, the people who came in, uh, were treated a very, we treat our our guests very, uh, as if they're our family. So we make sure that they're very comfortable and, uh, and really enjoy their stay while they're in town. In terms of the spin-off benefits, uh, we do have a a facility, and, uh, it's pretty prominent when you drive into Midland. It's actually, I like to call it the head or the start of, uh, as you're going into downtown and heading down the town, down the hill towards that, uh, wonderful bay that we, uh, that we live on. Um, the building itself, uh, again, we, it's available for rentals and, uh, many different, uh, events, weddings, uh, things like that. Uh, so it is a, it is a rental facility that's available in the town. But further to that, we really try to put some special emphasis on, um, the community support organizations that are out there also, uh, helping in the community, and we have kind of a special place in our heart for, um, uh, a few different ones, uh, the Special Olympics, um, the, uh, CLH Development Support Services, that's, um, Community Living Huronia, and then, uh, finally Civitan. Um, I'd be remiss to say that, uh, the connection here has been driven through a a family who's been very much involved with the club, the Wilson family, and, uh, coming, moving forward, we really plan to start developing these, uh, relationships a little more closely and and making them a little more formalized. Okay, so I'll move a little bit over to to how we operate and, uh, and how we keep the, keep the place open. When we look at our operating costs, we've had some challenges. As I said, we're, we are fully self-funded. Uh, when you looked at our two thousand and two operating expenses, um, versus two thousand and twenty, we increased seventeen percent, even though we were closed for COVID. Or even though we're, uh, slowed down for COVID, um, it gives you a bit of an idea of the cost of running a rec complex like that. Uh, insurance was a killer. It increased forty-nine percent. Gas, uh, twenty-one percent in bar labor with the increase in the minimum wage, uh, basically went up twenty, uh, twenty-five percent as well. So when we, uh, when we look at that, we have to make appropriate actions, and we want to act responsibly and make sure that we're carrying our own weight and the members carry their weight. And, uh, we we did that by revising our fee schedule this year. Um, not without some pushback from our members, but, uh, again, it's it's really doing the right thing for long-term, uh, viability. Um, I will say that again, this year we're tracking at a very high increase as well. We know inflation is high. Uh, we do want to try to keep things affordable for, uh, the members and for people who want to come in and join the club. As it was noted earlier, our, uh, building was built in nineteen nineteen. It's not a new building. It's dated, and, uh, capital investment has been needed over its life, and it currently still needs to be made. So we're anticipating, um, capital investment of around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the next seven years, and that's for things like accessibility. So we do know that we need to become accessible, uh, at twenty thirty, when that, uh, when the accessibility, uh, requirements kick in. So we're committed to working to do that. Again, being an inclusive club, we want to be sure that we're, we're, we are accessible and we're able to, uh, service all members of the community. Um, the ice pad itself is fifty-eight years old, and that is the lifespan of a typical ice pad, and, uh, anybody who's had any involvements with arenas know that what's involved with that. Uh, we have successfully kept up our ice plant, so the machinery that keep that keeps the cooling going is is in good shape. However, the pad itself is, uh, is at the end of its typical life. So we will need to look to increase, uh, replace that in the next, uh, next two to five years. Um, so we are doing a capital project, uh, inventory, uh, putting plans in place, and as I had stated before, grants are primarily where we get our funding for our capital. Uh, and that's where we plan to mainly go to, uh, uh, raise that money. So, in summary, we're a not-for-profit organization that's highly involved in the community. We've developed champions. We develop, uh, chi- children. We work with, um, seniors, uh, in the community. Uh, and we also work with several not-for-profit groups to make sure that we're covering all the bases and being a solid, uh, community citizen. Um, and, uh, really what we're looking for, if we, you know, it just struck me, I just the other day, I was driving to the club along, uh, Young Street, and I passed a sign, and it's the Town of Midland sign, and I just thought it was really interesting that the one thing that doesn't necessarily fit here is the curling club because we are not a town facility, whereas all the other things are town-run for, you know, organizations or facilities. So it may be proud actually to be, uh, included or to feel whoever made up the sign felt it was important enough to have the curling club there as a service offering that should be communicated, uh, to people who are coming downtown or towards the downtown. Just in closing, uh, wanted to, uh, reinforce that, um, or or I guess communicate that the future actually looks really, really bright for curling. If anybody's watched the game on TV over the last little while, they've introduced a time clock to speed up the game. The athletes are younger. They're all pretty good-looking, and, uh, you know, this type of stuff really will help draw new people into the sport, and, um, for ourselves, with the, uh, with the coming out of COVID, we've gone hard at trying to work to bring youth back into the club. So the this girl's school or the, uh, the high school girls' team was, uh, one example. We've partnered with the tiny township to bring in a, uh, a group, uh, to experience curling, and we are going to be running a, uh, a, um, March break, uh, program as well. So the parents can get their kids out and and get them moving and away from that screen. So I want to thank everybody for the, uh, thank council for the, uh, for the time and and appreciate it and open for any questions if there are any.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Jay, for your, uh, presentation. It was very informative. Glad to hear that, uh, you came out of the pandemic with some innovative programming to draw in uh, new people to the curling club. That's great to see that, uh. I'm gonna open this up to, uh, council for any questions. I have, uh, Mayor Gordon.
Oh, thank you. I knew you had to work the word hard somehow into that, uh, presentation. We missed out on the hurry. I was just waiting for you to plant that seed somewhere in there. Uh, just all no serious. Thank you for coming and, um, enlightening us and the people that watch these, uh, proceedings online. Uh, these deputations are really important way to communicate things to the community. Uh, people, a lot of people think it's just to come and ask for money or ask for things from the, from council, and that couldn't be further from truth, although it does on occasion happen. Um, but thank you very much for this. I'm, I know I've had the pleasure of coming on, meeting you at the facility, getting a tour. Um, I've only had the opportunity, I think, to recreate there once. I did enjoy your bar service, and it was, uh, there was some curling involved, and I'm terrible at it, but it, uh, was very nice. And I'd like to get back again. Um, I won't be one of those good-looking people out there, though. I I just, one of the slides really caught my eye, and I just thought it's just worth repeating again, and that, you know, we, the cost of operating that recreational ice surface and that recreational facility, the fact that it's gone up, you know, seventeen percent basically while you're virtually closed to the public with no ability to to make income. Your insurance has skyrocketed. Uh, you know, the cost of gas for your heating and, uh, your plant and the bar labor, these are all, this mirrors the very issues we have operating our sports and rec center. And and any other municipality has recreation centers, and the fact that, you know, you really were faced with, uh, you know, the undeniable truth that a revised fee schedule was in order, um, and it doesn't keep everybody happy. It just, it it was almost like, I'm sure that Mr. Campbell was probably just grinning hearing this because he's like, this is what I tell you guys about the sports and rec center, and he's, he's bang on, and this is a, something that we're all facing with. So first of all, kudos for a self-funded organization like yourselves to draw the same conclusions, and I think that should validate what we've been hearing from staff about our same operational challenges, albeit on a macro scale. Um, and the fact that you're looking for creative ways to remain viable, attract youth, um, you know, offer a exercise and recreation to people from all ages. That's, uh, that's fantastic. That's actually an aspirational goal in my mind for what our municipality could and could do with the appropriate funding and, you know, with with enough staff and and operating programs like this in tandem with you. So I'm glad you're on our way finding sign. That wasn't by accident. And, uh, anyway, thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight. I'll turn the mic over to my peers. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I have a councillor Ball would like to make a statement or a question. Okay, sure.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say that my kids started a few weeks ago in the youth program. Yeah, and I, um, kudos to you for the advertising, first of all, because I didn't know it had been running since fall until we joined. So, uh, you obviously had more amp up over Christmas, maybe for that, um, and just the inclusive, the inclusivity of the space is amazing to see. Uh, they're having a blast, but just even the families with the young, like I have a younger kid that isn't on the ice, and there are a lot of other families that aren't, and just having them run around and feel welcome, and the volunteers that are running that program are phenomenal. It's such a well-run program. So I just wanted to give you complete kudos for that. It's an, it's amazing to see, and I'm glad to have that resource here. So I'm, I'm hoping people are watching at home and and are flocking there because it's a really well-run program, and it's really a well-run club. So I just want to say thank you for having it.
Thank you. I I will just add one comment, and I didn't really get into it as deeply as I would have liked to, um, in the presentation. Volunteers are our lifeblood. Everything we do is volunteer-based. Um, the people who trade, who are running the program on Sunday that you see are volunteer-based. It's like a daycare in there sometimes, and, you know, they, nobody gets paid for that. Even the, when you see coaches helping other curlers, their volunteers just simply passing along, and they take courses sometimes at their own expense to do that, and, uh, you know, some of it's a, it's a passion.
Yeah, I was gonna say the passion, you can really see that, and just the happiness that everyone feels being there. Like, I haven't seen anyone be annoyed at anyone running around or playing. They're really there. They're really excited to be there, and they're welcoming. So I think that's speaks huge to you guys as a board and as your organization and as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ball. I have now councillor Downer like.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other questions for Mr. Jay? Councillor East?
Not really a question, but maybe, um, a fun little thought for a fundraiser if you wanted to, you know, pick it up with me.
We, we like raising funds.
But maybe we could look at possibly in the future, a friendly little charity fundraiser event with our town council against Penetang and Tay and Tiny, and see if they would be on board with, uh, maybe having a friendly little game and raising some funds in the future. Who could thought?
I'm sure there's enough connections between the communities to make that happen.
Thank you, Counselor East. Yes, Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton, uh through you to Mr. Jay. Thank you for the presentation. Um, just uh you know, those are big numbers that you have to come up with by twenty thirty um or and and most of its grants are I'm not sure a portion of its grants, but I'm I'm sure there's fundraising in there as well. That's right of it. Has there any been any um and I'm and I'm I'm going to amalgamation here with Penetang. If has there been any talks about, because I'm sure their curling rink not as old as uh Midlands, but I'm sure they have their uh their issues with um ice plant and and so forth. Is there long-term um any type of um, you know, thoughts of uh amalgamating with Penetang and 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 you know, building, you know, a stellar curling rank, new new age and then and so forth? And then I'm not sure if that ever came across uh across your plate.
Right. Um, the first thing I would say is when you look at what it costs just to keep us going to build a new i- it's pretty, it's very aspirational and uh probably um, you know, multiple layers of government and and local, you know, support would need to come out of that before we could we could make that happen. Um, but it would be an amazing thing to see, um, you know, the area become um a crucible for for you know, upcoming future champions and things like that and and hosting Scotty's events and things that uh that get national, you know, coverage for the area. That'd be that that would be fantastic. Um, to answer your question directly, it's been looked at no at least three times that I understand, and for various reasons, uh it hasn't happened. Um, we are, we have been talking to the Midland or the Penetang Club because uh they have very similar issues in terms of cost. Um, what I will say is uh that as a club, we we really want to really, we want to have control of our destiny. We want to be able to uh be sure that we will not miss a season of curling. Uh, and some people may know that Penetang did last year because of uh equipment failure. Um, so we're putting in place plans now to make sure that that doesn't happen. That doesn't mean that if we invest, we, you know, a merger couldn't happen. It's just planning the right way, and we're really, we really feel we're doing that um so that we can be very um we don't see an interruption in service at all, and that's our goal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jay. I really appreciate you coming this evening. Uh, it's uh good to hear that uh the Curling Club is um doing well for the community and always has been. Uh, we look forward for the future for your organization to carry on with uh the benefit for the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Our next agenda on the deputations, we have uh item fifteen point two is the Georgian Bay General Hospital and Foundation for an update. I'm sorry, I was I was looking at the audience, but it's actually a person on uh coming through uh on the screen. I'll I'll give it to you. Sorry, I'll give it to Nicole Craftshick and Mr. Matthew Lawson to do the presentation. Uh, you have ten minutes for your presentation and um, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry.
No, um, I just wanted to also say that we have invited Dr. Jeff Galiski, our uh Deputy Chief of Staff and our lead physician on physician recruitment here, as we know, family physicians and physicians in general is a a hot topic at any day of the week and uh certainly in our community. So thank you, Council, for making time for us. Um, we just want to go to the next slide. Just want to share a little bit about GBGH. Uh, we have the privilege of serving um the communities of North Simcoe. And we do that with an amazing group of nearly nearly a thousand individuals made up of uh over seven hundred staff, two hundred credentialed individuals, including physician, midwives and dentists, and a hundred plus volunteers. And they deliver a tremendous amount of service to our community, uh making sure that residents have timely access to care. And this is, you know, really the pillar um from us of how we deliver care. It is really about the people. In uh twenty-one, twenty-two, uh we're not going to run through all the numbers, but you can see the the sheer amount of activity that happens in our our building, supporting this community. Um, we operate roughly a hundred and thirteen beds. Every day they are full. And uh our emergency department is seeing thirty-nine thousand, nearly forty thousand visits a year. Often over a hundred and thirty a day at at peak, uh especially in the summer. This activity obviously is continuing to grow as our population ages, as our demographics shift, and as everyone's healthcare needs continue to grow. Um, the other aspect, if we go to the the next slide is, is where do these individuals come from? And it's important to denote, uh based on our catchment area that we are providing the majority of the services for individuals seeking emergency department care. And specifically for Midland, um individuals from Midland eighty-six percent of the time are uh attending to the Georgian Bay General Hospital, which is quite good. Um, that certainly speaks to our level of access, the level of service that uh we are able to deliver for our community. And also the the faith that the residents of the the town do provide GBGH. We continue to work on a number of different projects and moves to make sure that we continue to optimize the care that we deliver. And if we go to the next slide, uh just want to share some of the the recent accomplishments of GBGH um and and what we've accomplished. So uh the biggest one obviously being managing the COVID pandemic. I can tell you because I see the data daily that North Simcoe is disproportionately impacted by COVID. We've had a higher number of admitted patients from a population perspective than many other areas of the province and Simcoe County. But that has not stopped a number of other elements of our focus, including actually relocating our dialysis program previously located in the former Penetang General Hospital site uh into a brand-new location over on Prospect Boulevard. Um, this was a uh government uh county and foundation-funded uh move, and that has been significant for us. We have piloted a a project with a virtual care company that actually saw over fourteen hundred individuals not have to attend to the GBGH Emergency Department for care, but access care virtually for free from their home or from their phone. And have have really focused on making sure that we are expanding access and services. Some of those areas of of access that we have expanded specifically our surgical capacity. We know that a a large number of residents in Midland and the surrounding area um are seeking out surgery that we can provide locally here at Georgian Bay General Hospital, given the specialty surgeons we have, but are ending up going to other towns and other cities. And we would like those individuals to not have to travel and be able to access care here. Previously, we were only operating one of our two operating rooms. And thanks to significant capital investment, we've been able to open not only that second room to services and surgeons locally, but surgeons from across Simcoe County. But we've also been able to expand the operations within uh our existing capacity. So the volume of surgeries that we are doing right now is roughly a hundred and sixty percent of what we are doing pre-COVID, um which is quite significant when we think about the amount of activity that our our community needs, and we would like to get that uh even higher. In order to support that, we had to uh renovate a significant portion of our hospital that does device reprocessing. So sterilization, uh surgical equipment, and and that was recently completed in December twenty-twenty-two. These are a a number of our accomplishments um and speak to where we've been up to for the last year or so. But I also want to talk about where our priorities are into the future, which is just on the next slide. Uh, we have, you know, four um really big, I would say, short-term projects. Um, we recently announced the approval of an MRI. Uh, we have thirty-nine hundred local residents traveling every year for MRI services. And with the announcement of operational funding, our foundation is now working with us to raise the funds to purchase an MRI, renovate our building to outfit an MRI so that those thirty-nine hundred residents do not have to travel anymore. We have a plan in front of the Ministry of Health for an expanded mental health program. Currently, GBGH experiences seventeen hundred visits a year to the emergency department solely for mental health reasons. And unfortunately, uh about forty-four percent of those individuals have both an acute illness, so something that means they're not medically stable and also suffering from mental health challenges. And unfortunately, those patients end up waiting on a significantly longer amount of time to access care. And GBGH has been working actively with Ontario Health and the Ministry of Health to bring those services locally here to GBGH and renovating in addition on the the back of our property um adjacent to to Highway ninety-three. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the HHR challenges and health human reverses challenges that we're faced with uh on any given day. Um, we have uh, you know, fifty-plus vacancies within Georgian Bay General Hospital for staff looking for registered nurses, registered practical nurses, personal support workers, lab technicians, uh x-ray technicians, et cetera. We continue to work actively with our partners at Georgian College, um at other universities and institutions to recruit individuals to our community, and I know that this is a a priority for everyone here. Um, many of these individuals are relocating their families from other parts of the province to come to GBGH. And we're certainly excited about that, but this is a a priority for us in making sure that our healthcare team feels supported and also that we are getting our building fully staffed to respond to the needs of our local community. On the bottom left, you'll see a a chart that shows our current hundred and thirteen beds in blue. And in the future of what a a hospital in Midland is going to need to look like to support our community, um, two hundred and forty-four beds doubling the size of our current organization, not only in terms of beds, but also tripling in terms of the square footage required to meet the current building code. Um, our building was built in nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-six, and uh hospital's useful life is around fifty years. So we are at the end of that useful life, and we have a significant infrastructure need within our organization and are actively working with the government on proposals similar to ones that you've seen at uh Collingwood, Aurelio, Muskoka, and many other uh regions across the province uh to replace our aging infrastructure and build a a brand-new hospital on the land located just west of our current site that our foundation um purchased a few years back. And and I already spoke about the surgical expansion and and what we're trying to do there because there are nearly four thousand people a year that that travel right past our doors to to have surgery that we offer at GBGH and um we're actively working with family physicians and surgeons to to have those patients not have to travel and have those surgeries closer to home and be able to get back into their bed as soon as possible. So uh I will turn it over to Nicole to to talk a little bit about our foundation that we rely so heavily on, um given that the provincial government actually funds zero percent of hospital equipment, and that is entirely up to our local communities to support. So I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you, Matt. Um, so now that Matt has really given you an update on all the priorities and the and the happenings at GBGH, I wanted to take the opportunity to let you know as a community how we can get together to support this amazing local hospital and uh economic hub that we have here uh in the in Midland. So um we are a separate organization as the foundation, but we work very closely with the hospital to ensure that we can provide the care uh that they deliver every day and support that from a financial perspective. Next slide, please. So in twenty-twenty-one, we updated our strategic plan and did a full review of our mission, vision, and values. But essentially, we are committed to empowering the hospital to deliver exceptional care. And we do that uh by ensuring that we can inspire generosity within the communities that we serve and to help strengthen healthcare for our community. And we also want to make sure that we celebrate the impact that our donors are having here um on our healthcare systems each and every day. So over the years, um, I came to the foundation in twenty-nineteen as the executive director, and before that we were raising about one point six million dollars annually, which even then wasn't enough to cover all the mounting priorities that the hospital had. Today, we're looking at raising about four million dollars annually, and unfortunately, that statement is still true. Um, when Matt was talking about the MRI, we're looking at raising four million dollars just for that. Um, so when we look at all of the capital requirements, um, we certainly have lots of fundraising that we need to do. Next slide, please. These are our um values, collaboration, accountability, respect, and excellence, and we certainly are guided by that every day in uh in how we serve the organization. Next slide. So when we talk about celebrating impact over the years, uh the Town of Midland has generously supported GBGH uh over half a million dollars, which is incredible. And you've certainly made an impact here at the hospital with the purchase of portable workstations uh helping to support the the implementation of an electronic medical record, which was a huge project for the hospital. Blood gas analyzers, tono pens, there's there's really an amazing amount that you've supported here at GBGH, and and we're very grateful for that. I always say that philanthropy is the difference between a good hospital and a great hospital, and you are certainly helping to make ours a great hospital, and we're very grateful for that. Next slide. Matt touched on some of the priorities in terms of mental health and the MRI. But again, with the government not funding new and replacement equipment, we certainly need to look at increasing our fundraising revenues. Um, and a few of the other projects that we're focused on this year are replacement of the central monitoring system throughout the hospital, which is an integral piece for the hospital. Uh, in terms of patient care, that's about one point three million. A hematol- hematology analyzer in the lab alone is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, and again, the MRI. So many, many capital priorities for us at the foundation and working with the community on how they can continue to support. Next slide, please. And I'll leave this with you before we I turn it over to Dr. Galiski to talk about physician recruitment. But for us to be able to show the impact that people can have on the hospital, we really look to patient stories so that we can share the amazing impact that people can have on the hospital when they support with capital purchases like equipment. Um, so if you or anyone you know have a story to share about the amazing care that they've received, it lifts up our staff, we give them heartfelt thanks certificates, and it allows us to show how people can make an impact on their hospital. I will turn it over to Jeff.
All right. Uh, good evening. And uh next slide, please. Again, my name's Jeff Galiski. I um grew up in Midland and work uh both uh as a family physician in the community and at GBGH in the emergency department and on the inpatient wards. Um, my my role as Deputy Chief of Staff is focused primarily on physician recruitment. Um, and I wanted to take just a couple of minutes tonight of your time, um just to briefly describe some of the new changes we made to our program and and to thank council for their ongoing support of our community uh physician recruitment program in the past. Um, recently, we've uh become more aligned uh with the hospital, uh bringing together both recruitment for physicians that work at the hospital and for physicians that are primarily based in the community. And uh this is done for a couple of reasons. Uh, number one, to improve efficiencies. And then number two, in a community of uh the size of of Midland, we really want to focus on physicians that provide comprehensive care, working both in the community and at the hospital. Um, our focus will continue on recruitment for community-based family physicians. Um, and and we want to find those that uh will support our hospital as well. Um, our program still focuses on four main um uh deliverables. Um, we've been focusing over the last year on improving our presence uh through social media, improving our website. Um, we've been working on our recruitment through education strategy and uh strengthening our partnerships uh with community organizations. And finally, working on uh recruitment of internationally-trained uh medical graduates as well. Um, next slide there, please. Um, and just very briefly, just to give this some context, uh this is this one slide that I pulled out uh from uh from the presentation, just to show council, I think, where we're at in terms of community. This is uh representative of our family physicians. And what's striking to me are the red bars on the right side. We have many colleagues that are nearing retirement. And our 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 real focus over the last twelve months has been And our 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 real focus over the last twelve months has been recruitment and. Um the planning for the future, finding physicians to take over existing practices, I think is vital to the to the ongoing care. Of our of our of our residents, so that's been a focus, focus on community medicine, community family medicine. And finding those physicians that are a great uh fit for our community that can help support GBGH as well, so. Um very brief, but uh again, thank you for your support in the past. And our program is uh much uh more aligned with GBGH, and I think it's it's uh it's it's working very well. Um so thank you.
Thank you very much uh to the presenters for giving us a really good overview of uh the needs and requirements. But also looking at the future of uh Midland and the surrounding area, that's an important uh. Place uh for the community to go to, uh so I just want to thank the presenters. I'm gonna open this up to um. Uh to the counselors uh for questions, I have counselor East. And you have a a question for. For for Jeff, I'm sorry, okay, counselor.
Thank you, Jack. Uh Jeff, I just had a question for you. First of all, thank you for taking care of Midland. Um if you had some sort of uh advice or guidance for our town council in Midland, what would you um? Maybe suggest to appeal to bring uh physicians into Midland? Because I know that we are really short, well, the whole Canada, short period on physicians. But what 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 can we do to help you bring physi- physicians into Midland?
Mm-hmm. I think historically, I I, as I was alluding to, the the support that the the town council has provided. Um house help support. Um visiting physicians, bringing them up to the community, showcasing what we have in Midland. So I think that that's one thing that's been very helpful is the the community support for physician visits. Um one of the the bigger barriers going forward, and I'm sure you've how heard from from other organizations and other. Um other areas is 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 housing, and we really do struggle to find adequate housing for our visiting physicians, our locum physicians. Um office space for physicians, so that's, I think, from a bigger perspective. Um we we need, we need support for both visiting physicians for tours and and looking for. For places for them to to stay while they're here working with us.
Thank you, thank you, counselor. Uh we have counselor Ball.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had some questions uh about the programming that you presented. First of all, uh congrats on, I guess, increasing your surgical capabilities, that's impressive. Uh I'm wondering about the, I guess, birthing unit and being able to offer higher uh needs. Pregnancy support um and NICU in the future, or at least something that has a NICU capability. On a smaller scale to raise the number of births that we're able to actually have per year. Because I know a lot of our residents are going out of area for that, so that would be my first question.
Yeah, so um the the birthing program at GBGH is something that we're quite proud of in terms of the approach. They, we have opened a prenatal clinic that allows um not only our family physicians that practice in obstetrics, but our. Uh local um OB-GYN also practices there and and allows early access to that. Growing that program is something that is is core to our our future as well. Roughly um half of low-risk births that are coming from the the local area are happening at GBGH. That was a third a couple of years ago, so we're continuing to grow that program and make sure that. Um we are giving new families that opportunity to have uh welcome new ones uh at their local hospital. And it's something that we're all quite passionate about. Um and are really focused on, you know, what can we do there and and how do we improve? We are currently recruiting for a second OB-GYN, um which will then, I think, further uh allow for uh those expansions. And working on um the space that they currently have and making sure that, you know, everything that's there. I- is that warm environment that anyone should expect when when welcoming a new one into their family. So uh it is absolutely a priority for GBGH and something I think we're gonna grow. Whether we get to a, you know, a NICU, I I'm not sure. Um there's a a whole bunch that goes with that in terms of pediatrician support, et cetera. Um and but it's something that I think is a great aspirational goal in terms of, you know, how do we get. Uh new families welcoming the majority of new ones here locally, so.
Perfect, thank you. I'm glad that you have it on your horizon. I know that it's no small feat, so just uh I saw the low birth number and I just thought I would touch on that. Uh my second question is about the expansion of the mental health unit. Is that strictly going to be for the emergency room to, I guess, house to? I guess, until there's a bed in a similar hospital, or is that going to be an operational, like, inpatient unit?
Yeah, so the the proposal is to um add, at this time, we've proposed thirty-six inpatient beds, so a full area. Uh this includes a um two very specialized programs that are currently not located in Simcoe, Muskoka. One being a psychiatric intensive care unit, so there is no psychiatric intensive care unit from uh Newmarket all the way up to Sudbury. That's something that um we believe o- our local community does need. And we have a a high number of cases of mental health, and the time required in hospitals is quite significant. And then the other program is a psychiatric geriatrics program. So for individuals who have some severe behaviors that are elderly. Uh and we've proposed both of those be regional programs. All mental health programs uh across Simcoe County work collectively together to make sure everyone has the lowest wait times possible, so. Uh you know, there's a centralized list, and we try and make sure patients are seen in their community. But also, uh we don't want people waiting in a a safe room, which essentially is a empty room with uh nothing uh in it other than a bed. We want to minimize that stay, so today we're experiencing waits sometimes over a hundred hours. Um just because there is no capacity in the system, and we know that this capacity needs to be added. Again, it's going to take us some time to actually have this built out in terms of building the infrastructure. But we're actively um pushing this as a significant priority for GBGH. And uh it it will house a a number of individuals, and we would expect roughly a thousand uh admissions and discharges a year through this program.
That's amazing, uh I think it's a desperate need for this community. Um and I'm just wondering, I guess, is that provincially going to be funded in some way at all or no?
So a capital expansion, um as I mentioned, uh the hospital and uh our lovely foundation and our amazing donors. Provide the funding for the equipment within the hospital. The provincial government kicks in ninety percent of the construction cost. And then the local uh community is also responsible for ten percent of the construction cost. So there is a significant local portion, but the construction cost of the building is mostly picked up by the province.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh thank you, uh counselor. We have counselor McDonald.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor Cotton. Um thank you very much for your very thorough presentation. I'm I'm wondering whether you're aware of the area of residents that don't have a physician? What percentage that would be? And I'm curious, how competitive is the recruitment?
Can we tackle that one, Matt?
Yeah, this is, this is right up Jeff's alley.
All right, good. No, I, no, I I really passionate about this, and it's it's a really significant problem. Um to my my work with with you of TV, the frightening thing to me is the the steadily decreasing interest in family medicine from new. Um med school graduates, so that that's the biggest uh challenge I think we're up against is. Uh year after year, um the numbers of medical school graduates choosing family medicine as their first. Uh career, first choice for career is is declining. Um and 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 secondly, the the number of uh family physicians that do finish residency that want to live in a smaller community is is even smaller. So this is a a big challenge. Um that being said, I I think we do have a lot to offer in in Midland, in North Simcoe. Um and a- as you alluded to, there are many uh patients we have in our community without access to a local family doctor as well. So it's 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 a big challenge, um but I I really think we have a a a great team. Um at the hospital, help work through some of these challenges, but I agree, it's it's a big challenge. And every shift I work at the hospital, someone asks me, um can I take them on? Do you know anybody taking patients? How do I get a new family doctor? And it's it's a big, big provincial problem, but um I think we have a a reasonable plan in place to to work forward through this.
Follow-up, counselor.
Just a follow-up comment, my heartfelt thanks to you all.
You're welcome.
Counselor, I have uh Mayor Gordon.
Thank you for the three of you for coming tonight and speaking with council. Mister Lawson, I had the uh the pleasure of uh meeting with you and your team yesterday as well. I think it was yesterday, days kind of blurred together, lots of meetings. Uh and I think one of the key takeaways for the municipality um in helping to support the hospital and its expansion goals. Uh other than, you know, that ten percent funding uh gap that we're, you know, collectively gonna need to try and find a way to uh to help you with. I think the more tangible achievable goal that we have some capacity on at this council level and in our municipal leadership. Is the uh planning approvals that will be forthcoming as you uh submit your plans for for growth. Um you know, whether that be the new wing or the entirely new um hospital add-on. Or even something like the MRI suite, anything that requires planning and building approvals in our municipality. Uh that's totally in our wheelhouse, and I know our staff, which have, you know, quite a pile on their desk right now. You know, we'll we'll be urging them to to, you know, much like many things that are important to us, try and prioritize these. Uh so that we don't stand in the way of your funding and of getting shovels in the ground and getting the those desperately needed services. To uh our residents and North Simcoe residents as well. So, you know, that's my commitment to you when the time comes, um make sure you let me know that things are coming in. Have those pre consultations with our uh building and planning team. Uh to make sure that uh you know, what's deemed to be a complete application is ready to slide across their desks and uh let's expedite wh- where we can. From uh my other perspective, I think that the uh the work you guys do um in our community is, you know. Everybody knows how valuable it is, uh people don't put a lot of thought to um healthcare services or let alone the emergency healthcare and services until they need it. Or their loved ones uh find themselves in crisis. So, you know, just a shout out to your organization and all your team members and uh all that they've been through. Um you know, going from hero to zero throughout COVID and uh just some of the. Untold and unspoken and and spoken nastiness that our healthcare professionals have had to endure, thank you for still putting on your uh. Your scrubs and going to work day after day, even when you didn't feel the love from uh some people in our community and the surrounding community, so. You know, heartfelt thanks from us, and uh we'll do everything we can uh to support you moving forward.
Thank you very much, it uh it truly is appreciated that the collaboration between Midland and many other municipalities that we work closely with and and the hospital. Uh to serve the the great residents in our area, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, uh counselor, counselor Merritt.
Uh through you, uh Deputy Mayor Cotton, uh to Miss Craft checked. Uh just out of curiosity, um you mentioned you you're you're um your goal is four million in fundraising. Um that's it's a big number, um how do you, what is your projected forecast for this year? Are you gonna fall short of that and uh and and where do what do you actually, what events do you do? Um to uh to get to the your goals per year?
Yeah, so this year, we're projecting to do about four point three million, uh our fiscal year end is is March thirty-first. And we're just in the budgeting process right now and working with the hospital on priority capital and those long-term projects and strategic goals. So we are positioned to do probably four point three to four point seven next year. Um so those are the numbers that we're looking at. And if we're talking about a larger capital campaign, that is certainly gonna take, you know, more planning. But right now, we're looking at really focusing on capital equipment over the next couple of years, specifically that MRI. And get that commitment done, and then looking at where we're raising funds for mental health and even that new hospital in the future. So we haven't seen a capital campaign at the hospital since the redevelopment of the emerged department. And so we we need to get there. Um I'm quite confident that with the way that we go about feasibility study and looking at um some of those goals. That we'll be able to achieve those with that community support, but it's gonna take everybody. Um we have fundraised with events, so we have gala, um which is hosted by us, but we also have partnership events. So many community um people can step up and and host an event for us, like the Glenn Howard Golf Tournament or some of the other things that we have. We have monthly donors, we have business opportunities, so we have a Kickstart Your Heart campaign going on right now where local businesses are supporting, we have a match gift. So we make sure that we have a very balanced portfolio when we look at how we're raising funds. Because when we look at COVID, for those organizations that were completely reliant on events. Well, that blew their fundraising out of the water because they they couldn't host events, so it certainly has an impact. So major gifts are huge for us, transformational gifts and and all of the things that come together, even those like legacy gifts. So how we were able to purchase the property, the twenty-two acres, was because of a legacy gift and estate giving. So um we have a very strong team when it comes to fundraising, uh so but. Open to any suggestions anybody else has as well, so and uh potentially a lottery in the future. We've had many people ask about a lottery, so might be coming down the pipeline.
Uh thank you, uh counselor, thank you to uh the presenters. Seeing there's no more questions or comments, I'd like to uh thank the Georgian Bay General Hospital and Foundation for their presentation this evening. Um I'd like also to hope that you guys will, or if you will, come back and do another presentation as an update in the future. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, thank you for having us.
Counsel, we're gonna move on now with uh with the agenda, uh we're now at uh item sixteen. Committee Local Board Delegation or Mental. Uh we have none this evening, but now we're on to uh number seventeen. Reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration. Uh we have uh one that was pulled this evening, it's um. Uh ten point four two CSR two two three dash nine dash two twenty-three. Perfo- proposed fees and charges. I've declared conflict, I'm gonna pass this over to uh our mayor to to deal with the agenda, your worship.
Thank you very much, so we're at ten four two, that's CSR twenty twenty-three dash nine, twenty twenty-three proposed fees and charges. And the uh report is basically, the conclusion is that staff reports CSR twenty twenty-three dash nine, twenty twenty-three proposed fees and charges dated February eighth, twenty twenty-three be received. And that the proposed fees and charges scheduled attached to report CSR twenty twenty-three dash nine be approved. And that the twenty twenty-three composite fees and charges by law be brought forward for consideration at the next regular council meeting. Or meeting of council, technically, that's that's what it says. Now, that being said, I know there's some conversation um around some of the published fees on the schedule. And so we can kick things off with. Counselor Ball, would you like to go first? Very good, Counselor Ball.
Uh I was just uh wanting to talk about the fees for advertising on on buses as well as uh proposed fees. For um the pavilion rentals by the hour, uh as well as pickleball by the hour. Uh I'd like to propose that we up those fees by the percentage of the budget this year.
Madam CFO.
Thank you, your worship, uh uh through you to Counselor uh Ball. So yes, and those amendments have been made, um and they are reflected in the proposed schedule that council has tonight.
So I will now step away as well from the rest of the fee arrangements. Because I have a conflict of interest with the rest of the fees for the rec centers, so. I will definitely discuss that if that has to do with any of those. I know that I proposed fees that are directly unrelated to that, though, so.
Just just a note, um so we did pass the rec center fees uh during deliberations. And so there was a very specific motion that said that those.
Just just a note, um, so we did pass the rec center fees uh, during deliberations. And so there was a very specific motion that said that those fees were going to be. Frozen at the 2022 rates. Uh, and so this report was really just to summarize sort of the changes because there were a couple of versions of the 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 fee schedule floating around. This report was to summarize the changes that have been made thus far and then captured the um, proposed changes of councillor Ball as well. So.
Okay, so perfect. No conflict of interest this time. I just want to be very clear about that since I did declare last time.
Perfect. So no changes are contemplated to the sports and rec center fees in this conversation this evening. So there's no worries. Councillor Meredith, I believe you had a some comments or uh, something to suggest on the fees.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gordon, through you to um. Just to staff, maybe Mr. Campbell or infrastructure. This is under infrastructure. Um, I wanted to propose the emotion that the rates uh, for the boat slips with electrical service. Be increased per foot per season. Uh, and also increases uh, per foot per day for uh, transient boat slips with electrical. Service. Right now, those uh, those areas are still in line with boats that uh, do not have those services. So I believe that an increased um, an increased amount for the electrical service is in order, uh, especially when we're, we are investing 70.
Am I out of order?
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship, through to councillor Meredith. Um, so this is an amending motion, so you will need a seconder.
Okay.
Councillor Post, seconding that amending motion.
Thank you.
Did you want to continue with your rationale or did you want to have uh, some input from other councillors on what you're suggesting?
We can uh, get some input from other councillors. That's fine.
Very good. Who else would like to chime in on the proposed increase of the fees for dockage with hydro? Councillor Ball.
I think it makes sense that they would pay more than to not have hydro. I think councillor Meredith, I will support you in this motion.
Councillor McDonald.
Thank you. Um, is there a suggestion on what the increase would be?
Mr. Campbell.
Uh, yes, uh, through your worship. And uh, I think councillor Meredith has the numbers to read properly in the revised motion. Uh, but the numbers he would. Has in front of him to give, I believe, uh, for transient slip to be uh, $2.36 per foot. And that the hydro for seasonals be $81.57 per foot. And uh, staff have calculated those numbers and they represent. Taking out a a look at what, you know, running air conditioner and and a uh, you know, your. Other electrical appliances might be on a boat and using uh, you know, an average size air conditioner or average size size of boat we get. There's about uh, uh, $11 a day of electricity used on on a boat running those electrical uh. Uh, instruments on a on a warm, warm day when they're running the air conditioners. Uh, so that's how those uh, numbers were well are calculated. So it's roughly about a 10% increase for uh, those sort. And when we looked at some other municipalities, uh. Uh, Perry Sound, as an example, has a a 10% utility surcharge for electricity. So, you know, the numbers we came up with of. Uh, 37 cents for transient and uh, $7.33 per foot. Uh, for the seasonal, you know, it equates into that uh, roughly 10% rate. Uh, increase, which is similar to some other marinas. So staff, you know, those uh, and today's rates uh, do not have not considered electrical uh, surcharges. So. Again, that was kind of a freebie the town was offering down there, but as we're trying to get more to activity based costing and charging the cost. Uh, the numbers that councillor Meredith has would represent what staff feel are an appropriate charge.
It just to uh, through you, uh, uh, Mayor Gordon, um, and I didn't finish saying, but we did, we did invest seven, we are investing 75,000 in in upgrades for the electrical. Uh, at the uh, the dock uh, this year. Um, so if we. To maintain that in future years going, we should uh, we should be increasing this. I see, I see no reason not to. So hopefully uh, we have some support. Uh, I have some support on this and then going forward. And hopefully we can uh, as you know, those repairs will will uh, be paid for by the increases. You know, going down in the future. So, thank you.
Thanks. I'll chime in on this one now too. I I support this. It um, it seems like an inequity. To basically give away the hydro, even if we didn't have to do an upgrade to the system, but we do. And it's not a voluntary upgrade because we want to make the pedestals pretty. It's uh, you know, we we have to because these things are aging and they're dangerous. So we have an order that we have to comply with. So I look at uh, the marina, um, and you know, I was, I've been an avid boater for almost 30 years. I've now patched over to trailering. Like a trailer rather than a boat, but still it's a boating still in my heart. But it's a rate based service, much like our water and wastewater is in my mind. And that it makes sense that there should be cost recovery. The town's not looking at making, turning a profit on these. By time we pay off the investment of the $75,000, we're all going to be long in the tooth. So this is really about just trying to make a dent in the cost of doing business to keep the marina. And the primary cost of the marina should be borne by the users of the marina. As we heard during the budget deliberations, it's not really fair to look at marine, the marina budget in itself and go, hey, how come we're in the hole? Because there's a a park component to the marina. There's the the boat launch, which we now are doing some cost recovery on. There's the washrooms that are open and accessible to all of the people of Midland that are, that cost is borne by them, by the marina's budget. So it's kind of hard to carve out the marina as a business on its own, uh, to see whether it's profitable. And it's so this really needs to be run, I think, like a rate based service in our community, not gouging people. And I had a good chat with our harbor master today, just happened um, by my office. And, you know, we really need to find that balanced approach where the, we don't raise the rates so much that we are out of touch with. The the community and and other places to take your boat, especially since we don't offer a plethora of services, you know, like a Bayport Wood or or one of the other um, Maple Leaf Marinas. They pretty much own them all almost now. So we need to keep that in mind too. We can't price ourselves out of the game, but we do need to make sure that our services are commensurate and that we uh. Barely. Share the cost of doing business with the people who consume that. It doesn't, it's not fair to someone who doesn't have anything to do with the marine industry to subsidize. Somebody who wants to leave their AC on all the time so their boat doesn't smell funny when they get back into it. So, short of putting meters on everybody's post and and the expense involved there and actually charging them per kilowatt hour. I think this is a fair, uh, reasonable balanced approach that isn't punitive to the people that do enjoy hydro and the people that don't enjoy hydro, don't need hydro or just choose not to plug in. They can enjoy the savings of the town dock. So I I think this is a good responsible approach and I actually kind of. Kick myself for not picking up on that during budget talks when we first kicked this around because it just seems like a no brainer. So thank you with councillor Meredith and your keen eye. Um, and for bringing this amendment tonight and I too will support it. So I think there will be a motion, the that councillor Meredith has. Fantastic.
So that that the rates for the boat slips with electrical service be 81.57 per foot per seasonal. And 236 per foot per day for transient. Is that how it reads? Thank you.
Wonderful. So we've had our discussion. All those in favor? Oh, pardon me.
Um, just a clarification, please, Mr. Mayor. The 81.56 is that for the, I thought we were talking electrical, but you talked about transient and seasonal.
Mr. Campbell.
The the rates are for electrical service on a transient site and electrical services as a seasonal user. So there's. Two different rate structures that we have.
So the motion is clear enough the way it's written?
We, if you can read the proper motion we gave you, the whole thing. Or or I get the clerk to read it.
Can madam clerk read the motion, please, that I approved? Thank you.
Thank you. So the amended motion is moved by councillor Meredith, seconded by councillor Post. That the rates for the boat slips with electrical service be $81.57 per foot per year for seasonal. And $2.36 per foot per day for transient.
Is that reflective of what you're looking for, councillor Meredith?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Lovely. And councillor McDonald, does that satisfy your concern?
Out of the fog. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, council. And for the record, deputy mayor is returning to his seat and I will yield the microphone.
Uh, thank you, your worship. We're going to move on now with the community, the whole of the conclusion of the agenda. We're on item number 18, I believe. I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, I think we still have to approve that original motion, right?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I was just going to mention that deputy mayor, you may want to step away. You're still. Um, council has voted on the amendment, so now the amendment will be included in the main motion.
Uh, thank you, madam clerk.
And I don't have that motion, so perhaps I could avail myself of your. Oratory skills yet again.
Thank you, your worship. The motion will read that staff report CSR 2023-9. 2023 Proposed Fees and Charges Dated February 8, 2023 Be Received. And that the rates for the boat slips with electrical service be $81.57 per foot per year for seasonal. And $2.36 per foot per day for transient. That the proposed fees and charges scheduled attached to the report CSR 2023-9 be approved as amended. And that the 2023 composite fees and charges by law be brought forward for consideration at the next regular meeting of council.
Thank you. Heard the question. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the motion's carried. And I welcome you back yet again, deputy mayor. Again, I'll yield the mic.
Thank you, your worship. Um, we're moving on now to item number 18. Uh, there's a notice of motion. There's none this evening. Oh, I'm. Excuse me, a councillor McDonald.
Thank you, um. Deputy Mayor. Oh, your name escapes me. Fine. Um, I would like to have a, my notice of motion is that council. Direct staff to evaluate if both a walking path and existing snowmobile trail could be accommodated. Along Bay Shore Drive from King Street to Aberdeen Boulevard. And the feasibility of clearing the Little Lake Path. For the 2024 winter season. And I guess the report would be including costs. If I may, um. Take a moment to explain why. Nope. Okay. I'll explain why at the time. Glad I asked.
Yes, madam clerk.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Uh, just for clarification, um, on 17.1, the proposed fees and charges. I don't believe you had a mover and seconder for the original motion, so we just need a mover and seconder.
We will return back to item number 18, notice of motion that was presented by councillor McDonald. Is there any questions from staff that we're clear on that? So we'll we'll move that forward then.
That's just notice of motion. It'll come up at the next meeting. So there's no debate discussion at this point.
Thank you, acting CEO. Councillor McDonald, do you have a follow up?
Just, um, because. I don't know whether it has to be next meeting is what I'm saying, but it does a bylaw say it has to be next meeting.
Acting CEO.
Uh, procedurally, if council wishes to introduce uh, something that isn't on the approved agenda, which is what you're you're doing. Then you need a relief from council to discuss that today. So you would have to get uh. Majority or two thirds.
May I clarify? I'm not asking to discuss it today. I'm giving you a longer timeline. If it doesn't have to be next meeting.
Oh, no, we bring, we bring this report back in time. So it's just. At at the next meeting is when you will, as council, debate this motion. And at that time. You'll get council, if they approve your motion, will give staff direction, then go away and deal with this. So between now and the next meeting. Staff aren't touching this. It's, we have no direction from council to do anything with your comment. You've just.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll, I'll eventually catch on.
Thank you, councillor McDonald. Uh, we're we're clear with this now, staff? Perfect. Thank you, uh, acting CEO for the clarification on that. Perfect. We are, we are going to move on now to item number 19. For general announcements. Do we have any announcements from councillors this evening? Uh, Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. I'm always good for one. Uh, this is just a reminder to people that the application for boards and committees are open. And uh, so far the applications have been uh, coming in not at a furious pace or at a snail's pace. I don't know if we're just not promoting it really well or if everyone's time is just stretched so thin. But we desperately need community to engage with us and be part of these committees. Uh, it's relatively thankless, other than we will thank you. Most of it's free and it's uh, very rewarding because you get to advise council and deliberate on issues that come before us and even create issues that we haven't become before us yet. So. I'll just quickly run down the list of committees that we're looking for applications on. And encourage you to visit our website and um, I think I can almost put in air quotes that the new one launches tomorrow. So if you visit our website tomorrow, www.midland.ca, you'll enjoy our brand spanking new website. But uh, on the application for committee section, you'll find applications for the audit committee, which isn't as dry as it sounds. Um, accessibility and seniors advisory committee, which is a brand new one we've smashed together and uh, councillor McDonald will be on that. So if you'd like to work with her. Get your application in for that committee because there's lots of heavy lifting to do. There's the committee of adjustment and property standards committee, which actually. Deliberates and makes decisions uh, on minor variances and whatnot in our community and the planning. You don't have to be a planning wizard. We have staff that will help you out with that. Our community hydro distribution advisory committee. I can't actually summarize what that really does, but uh, it's important and it's a committee. So I won't try and pretend on that one. Council's task force on affordable. Housing committee, that's uh, well, it speaks for itself. If if affordable housing in our community is your passion, uh, we need you. The heritage committee, again. Midland is a historical community and to recognize and to. Label and to manage our historical assets, we need the volunteers in our community to help that. That's just our staff just don't have the the capacity to do that or on their own. There's the airport commission. And the Midland Public Library, which is a separate application. If you're interested in joining with them, the Midland Penitent Wishing Transit Committee. Uh, and there's the Midland Police Services Board and the MPUC Sale Proceeds Committee. So there's the laundry list of available committees right now that we're looking for people to join. And I encourage you to visit our new spanking website tomorrow. And apply to any and all that, uh, you know, think you think you've got the time to uh, to dedicate to. One more thing, sorry, before I yield, is that uh, I am one of many peoples uh, that you can sponsor for the. Coldest Night of the Year event, which is a fundraiser in, at least in Midlands community. This is all over Canada, but we're raising funds for the guest house shelter. And for those of you that follow the news, um, you'll see that uh, the topic of homelessness and the fact that the guest house shelter has been unable to stay open most days. you'll see that the topic of homelessness and the fact that the Guest House Shelter has been unable to stay open most days to provide basic services like toilets and the day programming relies largely on the fact that, A, they can't find volunteers, and secondly, they can't seem to hire anybody either for a couple of reasons I think we heard of. One is most people are having difficulty attracting staff. It's not super highly paid. And the other thing is they just don't have the funding to stay open during the day, and they're spending the funding they do have to make sure they stay open at night when people need to sleep there. So, long story short, is the you can sponsor me and the Town of Midland team I've created. You can just type in your computer or your phone, Coldest Night of the Year, Midland, and you'll find a sponsor page. There'll be a bunch of teams that are organized, and heck, make your own team and raise funds, but I'm going for five thousand dollars. I've invited all of the Town of Midland Council, the staff and families to join me to help raise funds, and the goal is to get that funding to the Guest House Shelter, in my opinion, specifically targeted, not towards a new washer, dryer, or anything else they may also need, but to get the people in there to stay open during the daytime hours, so that those doors are open, so that the homeless folks that choose to avail themselves of washrooms and services that are available to them when the doors are open can do that. So it's it goes a long way to help what seems to be a critical acute problem in our community right now. And here's a way with five bucks, ten bucks, whatever you can afford, to put some money towards this worthy cause as we help the Guest House Shelter. So there's my spiel, and feel free to visit my social media page. You'll find lots of links to ways to sponsor either me or members of my team. And I do call out the challenge to my fellow councilors. Join my team, please. Even if you can't walk that night, you can still collect funds and sponsor, and there's also other ways to volunteer. So I'll get off my soapbox and yield the mic. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. I have a Council Ball announcement, or are you just?
I'm just trying to clarify. Right now, I believe that I'm on the Midland Public Library and also on the Severn Sound Environmental Association and something else, but are you saying Mr. Mayor, sorry, that there is a spot for the Police Board? I thought it was you and
Your Worship?
Thank you. These are citizen appointees, so the fact that councilors get appointed to different committees and boards, that's something that that I do in collaboration with you, and all of you now know what which ones you're you're working with this, at least this year. We want to talk about moving people around midterm. But what I'm doing is a call out for all the resident appointees. So there are positions on the list that I just went through that require residents to be participants. And if we don't have enough, we don't have quorum. And then these boards and committees just don't function, because you can't run a meeting unless you have the quorum. So that's why it's so critical that we attract and keep and give, you know, whatever it takes, shoulder rubs or whatever, to get people onto these boards and committees and to do the work with us. So not to be confused with the ones that you've been placed on as your as your role as a councillor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Worship, for that clarification. I have Counciler McGonagall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Just in clarification with the committee, Community Committee appointees, I understand that start staff are working on the terms of reference for the Active Transportation Committee, and I'm aware of some community members that are awaiting for that. They would like to volunteer, so that just wasn't on the list, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Gordon, you have a follow-up with that explanation?
Yes, and to, I'm sure we're talking about like guys like Howie and all the the team that love that committee so much. You're right, I did not read the off the list right now, only because it's not actively being advertised for, but as soon as those terms of reference are wrapped up, and I know staff are working diligently on it diligently on that, that'll come back to Council. And I think what we're looking to do there is just put some more defined guardrails on what the scope of that committee is, just so they don't wander into areas that really wasn't meant to be. And Council ultimately will review what staff are recommending the guardrails look like for that committee. And if we accept that, then the call will immediately go out for membership, and then we can see that hopefully the flurry of activity for applicants on active transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other general announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item twenty, and it's a motion to close the committee. And I do have a motion in front of me, moved by Council Ball, seconded by Council Meritas, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing none, it's carried. Thank you. I will now turn the floor over to the Mayor. Your Worship?
Thank you very much. We'll bounce right in. Number twenty-one, it's a motion moved by Councilor Downer, seconded by Council Post, that the recommendations of the committee, the whole, for the meeting of February eight, twenty-twenty-three be adopted as resolutions of Council. All those in favor? The opposed? That is carried. All right, next, we move to number twenty-two, which are motions for which notice was given, which, just as a reminder for Council McDonald, this is where your motion will appear on our next agenda, because you gave notice today. And had you had you not given notice today, you could have done it in writing up to noon the Tuesday before our next meeting, and it would have been in the same spot, except you've telegraphed everybody what's coming, so now they can be on bated breath. Okay, so we have twenty-two point one, motion moved by Council Ball. And I need a seconder to get this on the floor, that Council reestablish Youth Advisory Committee. Have a seconder, Council Downer. And the motion is pretty simple. The Council reestablish Youth Advisory Committee. Take it away, Council Ball.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor Gordon. So I would like to propose the Youth Council. It's been, I guess, no stranger to the fact that I'm really promoting youth and really want youth engagement in our community. I know that we've seen an increased amount of families moving here in the last few years. We've saw a library presentation a few weeks ago discussing teen space and how they've had to have a teen space available now because of how many youth there are that are looking for things to do in our community and to be engaged in our community. I have had community members reach out to me and organizations reach out to me, and I do have the ability to say now that I've been offered to funded staff by BGC, as well as Big Brothers and Big Sisters, to go towards this committee. They're willing to put one staff per organization to collaborate with us on this committee. They also have access to a lot of youth that are already in leadership roles within their organizations that would would be interested in something like this with our Town of Midland. And also, they have access to the Simcoe County School Board. If that's something that we wanted to investigate, and the youth there, they can promote in there as well. I'm looking for collaborative, I guess, organizational as a whole within just not just BGC, as well as Big Brothers and Big Sisters, but to expanding that to other community organizations. I've had parents and youth reach out to me since last meeting to also gauge their interest in this. I think that having those community partners that are willing to work with us and willing to bring funds forward for that, it takes a lot of pressure off of the budget that would normally have to come out of Midland taxpayers. So I would like to bring this forward. If you have any questions or you you want to talk about it, I would love to do that now. I think it's a great idea and a great way to engage our youth, that they've had a really fun time doing it in the past, and I think it's time to bring it back.
Okay, well, this is probably a good time to skip down memory lane, and I believe, Madam Clerk, you have some experience back when you were in charge of the committees, and the last time this happened. And it might be good to provide some context and insight for Council as we're considering resurrecting this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship, through to Council Ball. Just by way of history, the Youth Committee was established in two thousand and sixteen. The committee was to meet once, once a month, and although we don't really have a whole lot of information in our records as per the retention schedule, because the committee was dissolved, I have got the information that from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eighteen, there was a total of eleven meetings where there should have been at least thirty-plus. And I know just from personal experience, as the deputy clerk and committee coordinator at the time, quorum was rarely achieved, although we've we sent agenda packages out monthly. We also had a difficult time having a council rep at the meeting as well, and it would appear that there was a lack of interest from the students to to come to the council chambers for a meeting. It seems they were more interested in actually participating in activities. So Council of the Day in two thousand and eighteen decided to dissolve the Youth Committee, as there were a lot of several youth initiative groups and programs in Midland, such as the Midland Public Library. They have multitude of options for youth, and with some of their activities and initiatives, high school students are able to get their youth volunteer hours. There's the YMCA, there's the North Simcoe Boys and Girls Club. The Heroni Museum is also going to be offering some youth programming, as well as Sistema Heronia and Heronia players. We also, we know that the Township of Tiny has a Youth Advisory Committee. However, they have a full-time Recreation Administrative Coordinator, staff person in the Recreation Department that that leads this committee. And in speaking to them this week, they had mentioned that they'd been advertising for their youth, and it was a very active committee. And as of December, or as of this week, they had only had one applicant, and they weren't sure why there was a lack of interest on for that committee as well. And again, in two thousand and eighteen, when the committee was dissolved, it was just given the fact that there was multiple youth initiatives being undertaken by various groups within the surrounding communities, and due to a lack of participation and quorum, the Youth Advisory Committee was dissolved.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that there are a lot of initiatives, and just as I mentioned before, those initiatives that are already offering those programming want to collaborate with Town of Midland to get bigger. We don't need a funded staff member, because like I said previously, I've already been offered to funded staff members from external organizations who are offering this programming, who do see youth in this capacity in these roles already. So they believe in it wholeheartedly enough that they've dedicated to staff members to this to this initiative, and they obviously do see the need and the want for those kids to participate in this, because they're willing to put their money where their mouth is, I guess you can say. Their want to expand having the Town of Midland work with other community partnerships around the area that you've mentioned, the library, Heronia players. Our goal and my goal of bringing this forward is that all of these organizations would be able to be involved in this Youth Council in some capacity and work collaboratively collaboratively with all those events and be able to bring something forward for all the youth and an inclusive, I guess, overhead committee.
Follow-up?
Thank you, Worship, through to Council Ball. With the the Youth Advisory Committee being reestablished within the town, it would require a staff, because there would be an agenda, there would be minutes, it would require staff time to attend these meetings. If you were talking about, you know, you're you as a member of Council attending and a meeting being or a committee being formed outside of the Town of Midland, then we would not require a staff person, but if it is the Youth Advisory Committee for the Town of Midland, it is, we do require staff resources, which, you know, results in overtime and extra costs.
Okay, we did approve a a new tourism event type position that maybe would be able to go to one meeting per month and take maybe the minutes are not taken by us. I'm not sure what the legality and I guess the bylaw according to that, maybe that's something that can be looked at, that there's an external person that takes those, and that there's an overseeing member there that needs to be there for the one meeting a month, then I guess maybe that's something that we need to look at, but I don't see there being a huge requirement from staff going forward with this. I I'm pledging myself as a council member who will be there every month. I know that's been the case in the past as well, but there is, I think, enough representation and enough initiatives from other community members that this could be successful. We've also seen a major growth since two thousand and eighteen. I mean, we we have more than two thousand more members of our community just from two thousand and eighteen to now, so it's sort of according to Stats Canada website, so I believe that there are more families there that are willing to take this forward and make it successful. And I think engaging youth is what we've been talking about with summer students. It's been what we're we've been talking about with this entire budget process and just engaging our community and bringing people to Midland. We want to make sure that our youth voices are being heard. I think it's a really important thing to bring forward.
Council Post? And then Council McDonald?
I guess it probably was two thousand and sixteen. One of my daughters was on the Youth Council, and she absolutely loved it in the beginning. It very quickly seemed to go downhill. She would be one of a couple that would show up. I think it was a great initiative, and I think there is so many other things going on with for youth. There truly is, and to continue to duplicate doesn't really help anybody, and it reduces the kids wanting to come. If you have people that are willing to provide staff and have a council, create a council, maybe that council can, you know, work on something. It could be recycling. It could be whatever their passion is, and then they bring it to council. So maybe they have a set time twice a year. They're going to bring something to council, so they're still working within their own council. It just doesn't necessarily have to be through the Town of Midland. They can be welcomed here. I just think, because I've been through it with one of my kids, and I mean, I think it's amazing, and it's just wonderful, and I think they started off here in chambers, and they ended up at the library. But duplicating is just, it doesn't always work, and I think if maybe we just welcome our youth and and set something up so that they can come and present, because I do know that the school did a few years ago, it was a recycling campaign they were doing. They were really working on it. We were supposed to try to work with them, and COVID hit. So there's, I just think welcoming our our youth is more beneficial because there's so much out there, and if we're all out promoting what is out there, hopefully there'll be enough kids that go. I just, I don't necessarily know that it's going to be successful this time.
Council McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Council Ball. I'm trying to clarify whether you're hoping to establish a Youth Advisory Committee or a Youth Council?
A Youth Council.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, do you have a mandate or terms of reference in mind to start?
So that would be done with the collaborating organizations that have come forward, and then to speak to Council Prose, it wouldn't be duplicating of services this time around. We would be collaborating with those services that are offering that to offer one large collaborative organization. So it would be different than previous years, and I think that's why it would be successful, is that I have those people committing to that already. They they want to make it work. They have experience in that area, and they're they see it as being successful, and I think I do as well. I know we did not have the greatest turnout last time, but I don't think that's going to be the case this time, and I'm just really hoping that you guys will give it a chance and to, I guess, prove you wrong, that it will be able to work.
Thank you. I think it's worth another try, myself personally. But I do appreciate the fact that there would have to be a town staff required there if it is a town-created committee.
Can we clarify on exactly how much time a staff would be needed to be there?
Through your worship, I think there's two things to think about.
I think there's two things to think about, and one is you've mentioned these other groups that want to get a bigger council together. They can do that. They don't need the blessing of of town council. But if they set up this organization and they wish councillors to participate, or. If we had our tourism group that wanted to, you know, participate in that, it's no different than me. I I attend. You know, groups with the county of Simcoe in the in the school board, you know, that's doesn't need council direction or not. Those are advisory groups that are working out there in the community. And, you know, again, councillor Maine attended those, and I attended those. But that wasn't a committee of an advisory committee to council. And I think that the comment is if it's an advisory committee to council, it needs to have. It needs to be under our our clerk's process with everything else. If this is a youth. Council within. The town of Midland, where all the different agencies that are already exist participate. I think that might be a wonderful idea, but. That's not an advisory committee to council. That's just a group that's functioning within the town to support youth. And all the initiatives that are happening between the different groups. So I I don't think in any way the the comment is. Is there a need or or value in in youth getting together and talking about issues? It's really. Is it a town led initiative? Or if it's a community led initiative, let them. You know, they they will rent them a space. Maybe we give them some lower rental rates to have their meetings at. The the rec center or something like that, but. Again, but if council wishes an advisor committee. You know, staff will, you know, follow through with those wishes of council and will organize the meetings. Will will be there, and you asked how much time it will take? Well, that's really how much time the committee requests that it take. If they will only want a one hour meeting once a month, it'll take. Three hours of staff time a month likely. Because and that three hours is attend the meeting, prepare the agenda, notify people, follow up. Write minutes, things like that, so. For every one hour meeting, three hours of staff time, I'd say.
Is that something that is required to do the minutes from the staff based on our procedural bylaws? Okay. So if you're stuck on the word advisory, then sure, we can call it an advisory committee. I'm more thinking that. It's for run from the town. You're saying a community, the town is the community. We service the community. Having the council here to be able to guide a next council, I feel like if we're saying you can go ahead and do that somewhere else, like we're not really supporting. And we're not guiding, like we're in this role and we are able to guide the youth based on having council, their own council. I want them to be able to look up to us. I want us to be able to communicate with them and them be in the same role that we're in as a youth. And I think that that is not going to be able to be achieved from an outside organization. I think the town needs to recognize. That youth want to be engaged and that we should be doing that. We should be putting our foot forward and allowing youth to have opportunities with us, like with our town run events, like Butter Tart Festival. I know we were discussing earlier like a a logo of some sort that like there are projects that we've already. Like I already have thought about, and I've already discussed with people who are wanting to bring it forward. There we do have ideas to bring forward to. Make important changes, and they do involve the town, and I think that is an important distinction that the town should be involved, and it it is in. My mind with bringing this forward is that it's a town run committee.
Councillor East?
So. Grade seven and eight, I had. A librarian. Named Mr. Delaney. Take the time to invest in introducing politics to me. That was grade seven, eight, and I'm forty six years old now. Grade seven and eight, the very same school. I believe Adam Chambers went there. And he's our local MVP. He was also persuaded into politics at a young age. The thing is is. What Jamie's doing is she's creating the ability to. Promote. Possible politics in youth. It also creates the ability to bring bridges between. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, and we are the villagers and. The Boys and Girls Club and, you know. Creates more tools, but what that would also be doing is creating interest. Now, if you look at high schools, for instance, you have. You know, leaders in high schools that. Want to take on more, and it is creating the possibility. And I'll always say it, investing in kids, which is investing in future. I'm also more than willing to give my time to Jamie. And see if we could build this as well, because I I I strongly firmly believe that. If we don't take the time now to invest in the kids. Then they might not take interest in filling these spots in the future. And I can tell you right now that. Even. You know. The people younger my age have no interest in it, so. Hearing what she's saying is creating the building blocks to something better in the future, so. Just food for thought, myself, I think it's worth just giving it a shot. I'll. Give you my time as well. And you have my commitment.
Councillor Meredith?
Thank you, your worship, through you to councillor Ball. I can see your passion you have here for it and and you're you're and you're fighting for it. So just keep it short. You you'll have my support on this one, so. So anybody as passionate as that and and and. Fighting for. Change, and I I have all the confidence in the world that this committee will be a success.
I just have one question here. We have the wording on the motion, the council reestablished youth advisory committee. But it, we've been kind of bandering back and forth that it's youth council. Or committee.
I don't know. I don't think anyone's held up on the name. I'm not, so you can call it the youth advisory committee. That's completely fine. I think this, the concept of it alone is perfect.
Okay, so the only thing that I might suggest is. It might be easier to approve this. Tonight, I mean, if I called the question right now, it sounds like it's going to get approved anyway, but for what it's worth, my two cents. We don't have a terms of reference. It's all kind of vague right now, and we're putting, building this plane while we're flying it. I don't know that that's really, and we're about to bind staff and have some. Potentially material costs on the budget as a result of something new that wasn't introduced as a service level change request or anything. So that being said, we just came out of budget. Would it make sense to defer? Voting on this tonight? And now we have a new. Council member who's interested in helping councillor Ball with this. Why don't you guys take away between now and the March first meeting? I'll just defer, I would suggest we defer this until our March first meeting. You guys create. A draft terms of reference or what this looks like. The, how many people would be on it? What kind of decisions they would be asked to make? Are they fed from council? We ask them questions and ask them to go out and figure out something and come back to us, or do they dream up their own things? The mechanism of presenting to us, all of that gets laid out in the terms of reference. And then you come back and then we can. We can. Not only. Vote to establish this new committee, but also. Agree that there's terms of reference that align with what you're saying, so it's a bit more formalized. I don't, it would just mean inducing a little bit of delay. And just give you guys time to do a little bit of. Wordsmithing and crafting a terms of reference. Would would that be a reasonable amendment to to, you know? Maybe pause this until our next meeting and give you a chance to do that?
Yeah, I have no problem doing that. I can discuss with the partners that have come forward as well. There was no terms of reference, so if anybody from the old council does have that, that we can tweak. They have been destroyed from what I learned, so that there isn't one from the previous council, so if there was one that somebody has. Access to that we can actually see, and we can maybe tweak to where it went wrong, so. We can have that, and we will can build on our own if we do not have that.
Perhaps you could look to Township of Tiny, who's running something that sounds it's very much like this. You could probably do a find and replace and swap the logo and. You know, probably have a canned set of terms of references that might work for you. Madam Clerk, did you have some input on this suggestion?
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to say if council would like to. You could table this motion. While councillor Ball gathers the information and then we could. Discuss it, or you could discuss it at the next council meeting for March first, so it would be put on motion for which notice was given again. But we will note tonight that it was. It would be tabled, so if you decide that you want it, you want to table it, then there's no more discussion, and we just need a majority to agree to table it.
Thank you. That would be my suggestion, only because. I'd feel more comfortable, you know, making a decision on this if I had a little more information beyond what we were kind of winging it with tonight. I think you've done. You've got it all bouncing around in here. And let's get it onto some papers so that not only we can see it, but the community can and maybe provide some input. And then we'll really know exactly what kind of animal we're looking at bringing back to life. And I agree that we shouldn't let failures of the past cloud the, you know, the chance to to do it now. It's just that we need to learn from the past to make, that'll help us not repeat it, so. If council's cool with. Tableting this motion, so it will remain where it is on the agenda for March first. Councillor McDonald?
I so move. The table of motion till March first. Meeting.
And seconded by councillor Downer. All in favor of tabling the motion? Any opposed? And as carried. Is it or tabled? Alright, moving on to number twenty three, our bylaws for the night. We're almost wrapping up here. Moved by councillor Ball, seconded by councillor East, that bylaw twenty twenty three dash seven being a bylaw to establish the rates for water and sewer services related to the operation of the systems. And to repeal bylaw twenty twenty two dash eleven be passed and enacted. This is a bit of a housekeeping bylaw, but perhaps Mr. Campbell would be great to just give us a little color before we call the question.
Your worship, budget time council approves. Approved a four and five percent rate increase for. Water wastewater, and this is just, you know, reflecting those on the individual billing items that are in it.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion's carried. Next, moved by Deputy Mayor Cotton, seconded by councillor Bald, that bylaw twenty twenty three dash ten being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting with closed session. On February eighth, twenty twenty three, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And the motion of the evening moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Downer, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at eight oh three P M. All those in favor? Opposed? And that is carried. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.